Let's get started here with, welcome you all to the July 23 city council meeting. Welcome everyone here and at home. I wanted to start out the meeting today by first of all on the part of all of us here expressing our sympathy and all heartfelt wishes to the city of Aurora, Colorado for the enormous loss of people in their community. We can't even imagine how that would feel if something of that nature happened in our own community, although we have in a neighboring community had a similar traumatic catastrophe. So didn't want the meeting to start without expressing on behalf of all of us, our sympathy for that community. Secondly, I wanted to remind you all and have you remind other people that this is the last meeting in this chamber for the foreseeable future, that we are moving across, we're on break through September and when we come back, we will be in space over in the county building while we work on the future of City Hall. And for, at the beginning two months, I believe, we will be having council meetings in the Bascom Tyson Room at the library while they prepare Harris Hall for us to share until we can get our next City Hall in place, right? So, and that's a, we have a lot of work to do on that, but we're going to do it expeditiously. So just wanted to let you all know that. The next, the first official item on our agenda tonight is a public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to us, the city council, on any city-related issues, except for those items which have already been heard by hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person will have three minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene Residence, your ward if known. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. A yellow light will come on when you have 15 seconds to complete your comments. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. I'm going to open the forum. And we have 16 people signed up. And the first one is John Flannery, and that's followed by Joseph ZDZ.
My name is John Flannery and I live in Ward 1. And I'm speaking about the, your vote tonight about the public advisory vote around corporations and corporate rights. This is probably not why you chose to be city councilors, but it is your job. There is no other way for us to have such a vote except by the city council doing that. There's, the Oregon Constitution talks about the initiative process being about matters of law and matters of constitutional reform, and this is neither. So we cannot through the initiative process put this on the ballot. You have to, and it's your job. The, I want to make it clear why this is not the same as other requests for an advisory vote, because this is not advisory to you. Now, it's quite understandable where you would have, you would only put on advisory questions that you actually wanted the advice for when they're local issues, but this is not a local issue. This is a low, an issue that involves us all, and it's highly significant, which I'll get to in a moment. And also there, we turned in 5,000 signatures saying that we're concerned about this issue and we would like to see a vote on this. I wanted, I think I have time to talk a little bit about Citizens United itself and exactly what it said. I encourage everybody to read it. It's, reading Supreme Court opinions is actually kind of fun. They are writing, they don't have to cite other legal precedents, although they sometimes do. In Citizens United, the Supreme Court said that citizens have a right to unite, to assemble and petition the government for redress of grievances. And so that means that people have a right to pool their resources for political action. And I agree with that. That's manifested, it's very important to democracy. They also said that that is what a corporation is, that it's people pooling their resources. And then they, they, they said, and this is not the same as a political action committee. They dismissed the idea that people already had that right through political action committees because they said, a corporation is a different entity than a political action committee. Now let's tease this apart. If it's a different entity, and it's because, and these entities are truly groups of citizens, it's a different entity because they are different citizens. A political action committee only includes those people who have voluntarily made a political contribution, whereas a corporation includes people who put their money into it with no idea that it was going to be used for politics. They put it in there for business. And there's no assumption that the corporate CEOs have any right in expressing the opinions of the shareholders. It's just not the same. They are basically, it's coerced speech, something that the Supreme Court said was not allowable in the case of unions. Now 50 years later-
Thank you. Next is Joseph ZDZ, followed by Charlie Swanson.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Shekulski. I reside at 1025 Taylor Street in Ward 1. Good evening, council staff. Will you move that in the audience? So here's another MX1. Okay, the EA Environmental Assessment has come out, coincided with your 45-day break. So you have something to read, right, on your travels? I ask you that you do go through it. Read it. I ask you that you think about all of the comments that we've made over the years. We're not a bunch of bullshitters. I mean, we've studied this, we've talked to transportation consultants, we've talked to financial consultants, we've read voluminous quantities of paperwork. And we come up here and speak, we're not trying to pull your leg. What we're doing is using LTD's numbers and the stuff they put out and analyze it, maybe in a slightly different way. But we have very valid reasons for objecting to the West Eugene MX. One of them is it's a very expensive thing for not much gain. You don't have the ridership out there. Envision Eugene says that that won't develop for at least 20, 30 years. If you read your analysis of the ECLA, you'll see, that's not going to develop for years. And here we're spending $95.6 million on a project. I think it's time to take a stand against excessive federal spending when there isn't much gain for it. You're not going to have the ridership out there. Stop throwing my glasses. I mean, downtown to downtown MX works. I don't have any issue with that. I mean, granted, it's this glorified school bus for young adults and a few people that actually do some business, but it works. It carries volumes of traffic, I mean, of people and riders, and takes that many vehicles off the road. Great. West 11th Avenue is a totally different story. And I really think you should think twice about it. And I ask you to read it and listen to what we've been saying. The other thing is, I really would hope that the elected pro-MX leaders in this town don't coerce the anti-MX people that are about to be re-elected. I don't think that's very nice of you.
Next is Charlie Swanson, followed by Stan Taylor.
I'm Charlie Swanson from Ward 3, Allen's Linkus Ward. And I'm urging you to pass Resolution 5069, which calls for an advisory vote in the November election concerning constitutional rights of corporations. Some might argue that the issue is not a Eugene City issue, so we should not waste our time on it. But the influence of corporations and other money interests has become so prevalent in U.S. politics that the issue affects every level of government. It not only affects decisions directly by using the money to convince electors to perhaps vote differently than they might otherwise, but it's more insidious. It frightens elected officials away from making decisions for their constituents' welfare if it might interfere with corporate interests. It's also an issue of concern to many people. In polls, usually about 80% of the people oppose the Citizens United decision, including about 75% of Republicans. At least 137 municipalities and six states have passed resolutions calling for a constitutional amendment. 11 cities have had voters chime in for a constitutional amendment, and 21 cities currently have a referral in progress. Montana voters will be able to vote this year to call for a constitutional amendment. Many organizations have formed for the purpose of getting a constitutional amendment, challenging the undue influence of corporations or other muddied interest in politics, including one in Eugene. And many other existing organizations have taken it on as a major task, including about five organizations in Eugene. At least 10 proposals are in Congress addressing this issue in some manner. So there's widespread interest throughout the country on this issue. There's no way for U.S. voters to collectively, collectively give their voice on a particular issue. And in Oregon, there's also no method for doing so. The only method available to voters of Eugene to give their voice on a particular issue is for the city council to refer an advisory vote to the citizens. We are asking you to give Eugene voters that, their only chance that they will have to collectively weigh on this important issue. The council has given voters an opportunity in the past to do so, and to weigh in on national issues, in 1971 and in 1988. Both times, the advisory question got voter approval. I hope you will give us another chance to weigh on this, weigh in on this important issue. Thank you.
Stan Taylor is next, followed by Len Hockley.
My name's Stan Taylor. I live at 1285 McLean in Betty Taylor's Ward. And I'm here with We the People Eugene to urge you to send Resolution 5069 to the voters. You know, when I look at these issues, the thing that I see that's most pressing is the fact that what's happening in our country is local governments and state governments are losing the power to govern. And that power is being taken away with the rise of corporate rights. And, you know, an example that I have heard here in Eugene in the last month is the ability of this council to be able to regulate coal trains coming through Eugene. And, you know, these balances between corporate rights and the rights of local governments to govern on behalf of their own citizens and the welfare of their own citizens is a fundamental issue that needs to be addressed. And unfortunately, the only way we can begin to address these issues is by pushing for a constitutional amendment from the grassroots up. The last few days, I've been reading Ray Raffel's founding father's book that talks about the original American Revolution and how that revolution was truly a revolution that included all segments of society pushing against the concentration of power in the hands of a few. And this is what's happening in our country. And what's happening in response is the building of a movement from the grassroots level. And the way that grassroots-level movement is being built is by cities like Eugene taking on the task of sending the vote of his advisory vote to the citizens so that the citizens can weigh in and we can begin to get a sense, state by, city by city, state by state, what the will of the citizens are and move us to Article 5 amendment to the Constitution. So I urge you to take up the issue by sending Resolution 5069 to the voters so that Eugene can be in the forefront of this movement to bring about the change we need to be able to govern ourselves. Thank you.
Next is Len Hockley, followed by Michael Carrigan.
I'm Len Hockley at 220 North Adams in Andrea Ortiz's Ward 7. I want to support the Resolution 5069 concerning the constitutional rights of corporations. It will give me great pleasure if Resolution 5069 passes. With this on the ballot, we will, as citizens of Eugene, will be able to join the council in getting on record against this threat to our liberty, even a threat to our existence as a livable city. For anyone who doubts that this is a local issue, I would refer them to Bill Moyer's program last week, where he and Chris Hedges documented the demise of four American cities: Camden, New Jersey, Wells, West Virginia, Emelk, Cary, Florida, and Heinrich, South Dakota. All cities where the citizens were trapped by corporate greed for quarterly profits. And we do not need to go far to smell the problem sneaking up on us here in, in the form of coal dust and ballot elections. Thank you.
Michael Carrigan is next, followed by Barbara Prentice.
My name is Michael Carrigan. I live at 1439 West Fourth Ave. in Ward 7, a great place to live. And I'm speaking today as part of the Opportunity Village Eugene Steering Committee. I want to thank city staffer Michael Wish for his excellent presentation of the Opportunity Eugene Task Force recommendations at last week's work session. And thank you, council, for directing city staff to move forward and establish a homeless village pilot project, though at a unspecified location in Eugene that'll be established sometime in the future. Lauren Boswick, Minister at Central Presbyterian Church, had an excellent letter published in the Register Guard today. I urge you all to read it. In the letter, he questions the belief that time and deliberation are the most important keys to success of a project. I agree with him that regarding the establishment of a homeless village, it's time to do something, even if it's less than perfect, because we can perfect it as we go. We are clearly in tough economic times. The poverty rate in America is the highest it's been in 50 years. The number of homeless in Eugene is steadily increasing. We're moving forward, which is great, but those of us involved with Opportunity Village Eugene feel that city staff needs to pick up the pace and pull out all the stops to get a safe place to be, a homeless village pilot project established by the onset of winter. Thank you very much.
Barbara Prentice is next, followed by Ann Kelvin.
Hi, I'm Barbara Prentice. I live at 4055 Royal Avenue in Pat Far's Ward. I'm a member of the Opportunity Village Steering Committee and also a member of Occupy Interfaith and the Social Justice Committee of the Unitarian Universalist Church, both of which have endorsed the Opportunity Village Eugene proposal. I want to talk about the council work session last Wednesday. I was out of town last week and was upset to have one of my colleagues describe the session as kicking the can down the road. I watched the session online this afternoon, and I'm sorry to say that I somewhat agree with his designation. Although there were many opportunities for the council to support an aggressive approach to searching for a site for a homeless village, they were all rejected for what seems like a watered-down request that the city staff begin and bring back a process for creating such a village. Unfortunately, the Register Guard editorial chose to support this go slow, get it right attitude without ever mentioning the proposal put forth by Opportunity Village, which involves both a full-pledged, full-pledged plan for a transitional village and an account of the outreach already done and ongoing to the communities that would be affected if this village were to be located at 13th and Chambers. I urge the city staff during the council's break and the council on its return in September to move as quickly as possible to locate a safe and secure place for the homeless to be. I was also going to quote from Lauren Boswick's letter to the editor, but in the last sentence, he talks about, "It's, it's time to do something and to perfect it as we go." And I would just remind you that we do not, do not want to allow the perfect to become the enemy of the good.
Ann Kelvin is next, followed by Zachary Vishinoff.
Hi. My name is Ann Kelvin. I live at 1601 Olive in Ward 1. I'm on the Steering Committee of Opportunity Village Eugene, OVE. OVE arose from discussions by community members following the mayor's task force on homelessness, Opportunity Eugene. OVE is not an Occupy camp, it is not an Occupy-type camp, and Occupy is not a model for OVE. We have learned many lessons from Occupy and from other tent cities, particularly in the Northwest, and we seek to emulate the best, to avoid the pitfalls, and combine that knowledge with innovative design and permaculture concepts in order to create a transitional planned village based on the concept of pocket neighborhoods of no more than 30 people each. OVE can help those people who want to transition away from the streets and are able to live in a drug, alcohol, violence-free community. While our designs are not site-specific, if we were near a school, we would give priority to the homeless families with children at that school. We will, of course, be conducting background checks. Everyone will be expected to participate in and contribute to the life of, the life and workings of this self-managed community, with oversight by OVE. OVE is in the process of becoming a 501(c)(3) under the guidance of Attorney David Atkins. There will be broad assistance and support to transition out of the village. My background, by the way, for good or ill, is neither in social services nor in political activism, but in business. And my area of interest when the village is underway is in supporting access to traditional jobs and housing and entrepreneurial activities. There's a great deal more to be said. I encourage those of you who have not yet read the proposal, to read the proposal, the preliminary proposal submitted one week prior to the city council meeting of 7/18. Opportunity Village Eugene should be judged on its merits. Let's do it right, and let's do what's right.
Zachary Vishinoff is next, followed by Dave Fedanki.
Hi, Zachary Vishinoff, Ward 3. Hello, everybody. It always feels like Groundhog Day around here. I guess this will be the last Groundhog Day, though. I guess it's, I mean, it makes me wonder, though, about Lane County, what their reaction is to have you guys, like, sleeping at the foot of their bed or whatever. And if I were a political cartoonist, you know, which I can't do cartoons, but I would just draw, like, you guys moving in with Occupy, you know, it would just be Jerry Springer's. He's brilliant. Anyway, I really wanted to talk to you about the indoor track proposal that you was trying to build, to try to just kind of entertain the idea of you guys cease putting a moratorium on the sports pork arms race. But I'm not able to address that because I want to address something else tonight. I would ask that reporters or the TV reporters in town, if there are any left, read the Oregonian. Ken Go's been writing about this indoor track proposal and how Vin Lanana's changing to focus on it, to get it built. And maybe we can at least have all the different sports pork projects in the local news because it's maybe going to be on Moss Street or, I don't know, Courthouse Neighborhood or Lane County Fairgrounds, I'm sure will be one of their options that they look at, you know, usual BS. But I want to talk to you about the skate park. I really hope you guys approve bonding for the skate park. The price is spiraling, out of control slightly. I will also attest to that. If you look at the Skate Eugene website, it does explain some of that. But I also think you should tell Skate Eugene to revisit the site discussion. One of the problems, I think, with the fundraising could be that they're trying to build one nearly million-dollar skate park all at one site. And it's the site kind of at ground zero, and I'm sorry, it's in the ghetto. But not that they, not that that doesn't, people, people support that site. I think it's a good idea. But if you split the project and made a second site under a newer bridge, and so it's not so focused on one area, there's other neighborhoods that would benefit and probably be more forthcoming with donations. Lastly, the piece of steel that fell into the park where the skate park was supposed to be built already, it would have fallen into the skate park. So we're lucky it's delayed. Please ask ODOT for a full report as you approve skate bonding. And also, like I said, please ask Skate Eugene to ask whether maybe two sites, a split site, one at each end of town would be better. Thanks.
Dave Fedanki is next, followed by John Hawkinson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm David Fedanki, resident of Councilor Zelenka's Ward, speaking in opposition to the call, item number six, the call for an advisory vote on the constitutional rights of corporations. I think the first thing the council should consider is that you have already approved a resolution on this topic. And I'm very confused by the language of this resolution and the actual ballot measure that would be proposed. Section 2 of the resolution says the ballot measure shall be as follows, and everything that follows after the colon appears like a ballot title. If the only operative, and there really isn't anything operative, in an advisory question, but if the only portion of the measure that is relevant is what's labeled advisory question, shall voters request that Congress send to the states a constitutional amendment declaring corporations do not possess the constitutional rights of natural persons, then that is a very overbroad question that I would submit to you goes way beyond the issues that were raised in the U.S. Supreme Court's decision in Citizens United. There are many types of corporations in this state, in this community, in this nation. There are for-profit corporations, there are nonprofit corporations, there are nonprofit charitable corporations, there are nonprofit religious corporations, there are nonprofit advocacy corporations. Let me give you a few examples. The rights of United Way would be affected if a constitutional amendment were approved with this type of broad language. The rights of every nonprofit corporation and advocacy corporations would be affected, including Community Alliance of Lane County and the Sierra Club and Planned Parenthood and the ACLU and St. Vincent de Paul and, and other corporations that do good works in our community. If corporations have no constitutional rights, then the government would be able to demand the membership roster of noncorpor, of nonprofit corporations, such as the NAACP, which led to a real U.S. Supreme Court case back in the 1960s, without any justification and without due process. The government would be able to demand the names of Planned Parenthood patients without due process, without any justification. And the government would be able to seize the property of corporations, both for-profit and nonprofit, without due process and without compensation. Thank you.
Next is John Hawkinson, followed by Tom Schneider.
Eric Piercy, councilors, John Hawkinson, 2595 Lincoln, Ward 1. More importantly for this context, our Business Avon Assessment is downtown here at 160 South Park. Our door opens this way, north, right onto the Saturday Market site. So we've been there since 2008. We moved from the Riverfront Research Park, as some of you probably know. But we're eager to stay downtown. We've had a lot of help in that regard from the city. It's been a fantastic experience. Really, I'm here tonight to encourage and support the work, the recent work especially of the Eugene Police Department in helping to kind of clean the area up because our first four springs here, eight, nine, 11, we quite commonly would open the door, go out, have lunch, have an informal meeting, sit on the bench, two or three people. That's gotten harder to do this year. That's gotten harder to do this year. About three weeks ago, I went out and noticed that, gee, the park is clean, the dog solid waste seems to be gone, there's no alcohol spilled on the bench, it looks like it's been cleaned up. And Toni Weber walked by, and we began to talk, and she encouraged me to say a few words of encouragement to the officers who were there, which I did. So, bottom line, we feel like we've got a reasonable assumption to use that park, have it be hospitable. We also feel like it's reasonable that the officers who have sworn to defend us, protect us, and have received a lot of training in that regard, I think it's reasonable to expect them to exercise a certain amount of judgment, because life is full of gray areas. But we feel like even though they're not perfect, and nobody is, they, there is nonetheless a reasonableness test that should be applied to let them exercise the judgment and the authority that you've invested in them. So, having said all that in kind of a legalistic way, bottom line, we really like what they're doing, and I guess I can't finish any stronger than that, so, thank you.
Tom Schneider is next, followed by Joe Tindall.
Hi, I'm Tom Schneider. I've owned a house in, on West 16th, close to Acorn Park, for 25, 26 years. We're currently taking care of my mother-in-law in Counselor Farr's district there. That's kind of where I vote and have my license. But I have been active in the Churchill Area Neighbors and the Churchill Walkability Collaborative. We recently put a 35-feet of sidewalk from West 15th Avenue into the park, because both the existing streets, or both the existing accessways in the park didn't really go anywhere. They sort of dumped onto the street when Acorn Park Street was a county, it was basically a county lane. It's still unimproved. They've got traffic calming humps on it now to slow people down. But really, that area is, you know, it takes, it's almost like, I don't know, perhaps Counselor Pryor would know, but I'm going to say like 4,000 families use Acorn Park Street, and even though it isn't a neighborhood collector, or it really acts that way. And over the 25 years that I've lived there, they've put in 11 new apartment buildings, almost doubling the number of residents that are in that area. And they made nice sidewalks inside all those developments, but along Acorn Park Street, because it was an undeveloped street, they didn't really know if the grade was going to be here, there, or the next place. They still want individual citizens to pay the $10,000, $15,000 to do that. Now, if you had a sort of a muddy street in front of there, I want to have you guys tell me how easy that would be to have, to tell people, you know, you're going to have to spend $100,000 to put a street in front of your house where cars go. But if you can still have the courage to tell an individual citizen that they need to spend $10,000 or $15,000 so all 4,000 of us can walk down to West 11th, you know, I mean, there's, they're building a Starbucks at the end of the street. It's going to encourage that. We also, it's going to encourage cut-through traffic there. We'd probably, as much as we'd like it to be Allen Brothers, or perhaps Full City, Starbucks does a lot of good things for the community. We're probably going to walk down there and have coffee, you know? I mean, that's how it is. And, you know, I hope, unlike Bailey Hill Road, a child doesn't have to get killed along there before we do something. So as we apply for a neighborhood matching grant, and just as a demonstration project to let you know that it's really important to us, and that we think finding some sidewalk infill funding program that doesn't depend on citizens digging the dirt and getting small grants, I mean, there's 40, there's 40 miles in the pedestrian bicycle master plan of planned sidewalks. We need to have you stop giving system development waivers to people that build things. Thank you.
Joe Tindall is next, followed by Wendy Butler-Boyson.
Hi, my name's Joe Tindall. As a newly minted police commissioner, I've been reading the police operation manual policies. But there are policies missing. For example, there are secret procedures for investigations we don't want bad guys to know about. There also seems to be unwritten policies, for example, a policy to target the homeless. The unhoused are ticketed for crimes for which people with money would never receive a citation. Many of these tickets are for jaywalking. When I witnessed two red-cap downtown guides jaywalking at an angle exceeding the five-degree rule, why was no ticket given by the officer I watched observe this event? Answer: It appears, one, we don't ticket good guys, and, two, we ticket bad guys for every possible infraction. For some officers, the homeless are automatically bad guys. Selective enforcement appears to be an unwritten policy. You should note that crime downtown dropped 90% while the homeless were at the Occupy camp. No homeless downtown, no harassment citations. After Occupy closed, 129 of 136 non-vehicleers citations downtown during the first six weeks of this year were for victimless infractions. These tickets were handed to the homeless to justify exclusion enhancements. We have spent millions to harass the homeless, yet they are still here. On Wednesday, you will again discuss the exclusion zone, and you still don't have the requested data. The city council should demand an immediate and complete dump as a computer file in human readable form of all citations and arrests and exclusions in Eugene for five years. I will write a computer program at no cost to the city to sort all exclusions with a corresponding list of citations used to justify that exclusion. You would have the information needed to make an informed decision. I also offer a workable solution to the larger homeless problem. This community will not accept a homeless tent camp, even if it's only a temporary measure until microhousing can be built. This would be unsightly and unsanitary. Use of large greenhouses with indoor toilets minimizes unsightly and minimizes unsanitary. A community agreement for village residents to sign with eviction if they violate the terms minimizes unsafe. To use Counselor Farr's metaphor, drain the swamp by giving the homeless a place to be, and stop wasting police resources arresting the alligators. By the way, yes on 5069. Thank you.
Wendy Butler-Boyson is next, followed by Marjorie Smith.
Yes, it is deja vu all over again. Wendy Butler-Boyson at 1265 City View. Of course, I'm here to talk about the West Eugene MX. The environmental assessment is indeed out. I would just like, I have my own copy right here. I spent a lot of time at Kinko's today, and they bind things there, too. I'd just like to talk to Joseph's remark about ridership. When this is built, and it's been in the RTP, that's the Regional Transportation Plan for decades now, 88,000 jobs will be within half a mile of the total route that we have built from West Eugene all the way over to Gateway, and there will be 55,000 people living within a half a mile. That's connecting a lot of people to a lot of jobs, and that's what this is intended to do. And if you want to know where the people are, you can look at page 3-9 of this report, and many others that show the same thing. All those bright orange areas are multifamily units within less than half a mile of the locally preferred alternative, the way out west part, not the near-in part. And all these other things are single-family dwellings, and then there are, there's the mobile home park on Bertelson and the duplexes, and there are plenty of people out there. I'm one of them, of course, as you all know. Why are we building MX? Why is the federal government offering us this money? Because our society thinks it is worthwhile to get cars off the road, to eliminate congestion, that's the 28th highest choke point in the entire state along West 11th, according to ODOT, the social justice of providing transportation for everybody, getting rid of the greenhouse gases by reducing vehicle miles traveled. There are all kinds of reasons, and MX in this town, or in Eugene Springfield, has been a marvelous success. People talk about, there won't be anybody there for decades. Well, LT didn't think that the first leg of MX would achieve its maximum ridership for 20 years. It got there in one, and now it isn't even free, and it's still rider, you know, full of riders all the time. So what do we want to do, folks? Do we want to send all of those benefits? This is a competitive bidding process that the Federal Transportation Administration has to go through. They think this plan is worthwhile. Either we accept the money and do all those good things for our community, or we give it back to the Federal Transportation Administration, and they spend it on some community that has a less efficient, less effective plan. Now, is that a good use of our tax dollars? I don't think so. And there is some misinformation out there on MX. I've seen a sign saying county budgets equal, county budget cuts equal MX. County budget doesn't fit into this, folks. I think you all know that, but not everybody does. I have my little Ride MX button. I take it places people say, oh, I can't do that, because I'm going to have to spend more money. We don't.
Marjorie Smith is next, followed by Bill Rogers.
Hello, I'm Marjorie Smith. I live at 2645 Emerald Street. I have been on the Olive Plaza Board for 32 years off and on, since it's opened in 1980. And it's the public housing that's downtown on 11th and Olive. It's a rather large building that originally was shades of pink until we painted it a few years ago. But it's also a building that most people have no ideas there. They don't see it, they can walk by it, they don't have a clue that people live there. And that is part of the reason I'm speaking to you tonight. I'm speaking in support of George Brown's request that the city council be supportive of the Olive Plaza residents' attempt to address the health issues that are related to the demolition of the buildings on the Capstone site, formerly the site of the Eugene A third, over a third of our 150 residents have been diagnosed with serious lung diseases. Some of them are in their last days, and any addition to that distress is very difficult to see. Most of the apartments at Olive Plaza tower over the site, which is already being demolished. When I walked that site last Tuesday and Wednesday, most of the windows were open, including those few that had air conditioners, because there are two or three windows per apartment. And because in a 525-square-foot apartment, where each apartment is off a common hall and people cook their own meals, if any of you've lived in that kind of housing, you know how wonderfully it can smell if you can't open the window. You have everybody's smells coming in under the door. So even if the windows were closed during the demolition, in August, we commonly have several days of at least 95, and somehow, sometimes 100-plus degrees. In fact, we had four or five days of that kind of weather in 1978, and we ended up with a fire in our house, which they never did figure out how it started, but probably in sawdust outside. That is very hot, and it would be a little bit like closing your car window and being in it when it's a very high temperature. It would be unbearable. The people in this apartment have, most of them have no ability to go anywhere else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our final person to speak tonight is Bill Rogers.
Good evening. I'm Bill Rogers, resident of Ward One, represented on council by George Brown. First, I want to thank you for approving Resolution 5055, supporting an amendment to the U.S. Constitution that would affirm the constitutional rights apply only to persons, not to corporations, and would allow limitations to be placed on political campaign spending. And tonight, I want to thank Counselor Betty Taylor for introducing Resolution 5069 that would place an advisory question about such a constitutional amendment on the November Second, I want to state as forcefully as I can why I am convinced that this is such an important issue. I care deeply about many issues. I want my daughter and her husband and her two young children to breathe clean air, drink safe water, eat nutritious food. I want everyone to have access to affordable health care. I want to leave the planet with a climate that is hospitable and sustainable. These are all, it seems to me, basic human needs, ones that we all care about, but I see serious threats to all of them. We can protest, we can demonstrate. The scientific community can reach a high degree of consensus, but arrayed against us are powerful corporations that focus on short-term economic considerations and are willing to invest huge amounts to further those aims. The Supreme Court, through a series of rulings culminating in Citizens United, has granted corporations rights and privileges that have made their work ever easier. Given this situation, I concluded that efforts to address the issues I care about so deeply are doomed to failure. To make progress on so many important issues, we need to change the rules of the game that have been dictated by these Supreme Court decisions. And the only way to do so is to work toward passage of a constitutional amendment. Finally, I want to speak to the question of whether it is appropriate for the city council to place an advisory question concerning an amendment to the U.S. Constitution on the city ballot. I contend that it is, and I'll give you two reasons. First, the people we have elected to represent us in Washington and Salem would have to vote on the proposed amendment, and it is important for them to know how the people they represent feel on this issue. And second, it would stimulate discussion of the issue, leading to a more informed population. I urge you to vote yes on Resolution 5069. Thank you.
We close the public hearing. Just briefly, I want to thank everyone who came tonight on the many topics that you've spoken to us about. And I, in particular, I just want to publicly thank Tom Snyder and the neighbors of Acorn Park for doing that sidewalk piece. It's greatly appreciated, and I certainly agree with you for that, trying to push forward our sidewalk infill would be a really important job for us to do. So thank you so much. All right, I've got Counselor Farr.
Thank you. I'd like to single out the commentary by Mr. Snyder also. It really, really rung true when you started to talk about the numbers of people that were using the street, and also when you spoke about Bailey Hill Road. It's important that we get ahead of the curve, I guess. Also, wanted to point out that your state rep happened to call me just before this meeting to let me know you were going to be here.
Counselor Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank everybody for coming down tonight, and I really appreciate people coming in and discussing our work session around our proposed solutions to people who are unhoused. I voted against the amendment that went forward, the resolution, or the recommendation that went forward, because I felt like it wasn't strong enough, and it was, is not moving fast enough for me, and I still feel that way. I don't know how much more work we need to do around this subject, or how many more groups of people we have to get together to ask the opinions of people. You know, I feel like there's other communities that have managed to figure this out. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. There are people willing to step up, different communities, different organizations, faith community. I just would hope that this council, that when this comes back to us, that we're able to move expeditiously around it, because I believe that, and this is just my own personal opinion, that when people talk about people who are unhoused, they're looking at the gentlemen who are on the corner asking for donations. And there are so many more facets to people who are unhoused that are not that mirror image, and so I would just hope that people remember that when it comes back up to the council.
Counselor Pauling.
Thank you. In reference to the homeless issue, I voted for the motion that was put on the table because it was more of a holistic approach to the entire issue and not so narrowly focused on just the homeless village, which to me, I think, was counterproductive of what we're trying to obtain, what our final goal is. But I do want to correct something that Mr. Kerrigan said. He said he wanted to thank the council for voting to, something along the lines, move forward with building a homeless village. That was not the vote. The vote has never been taken to move forward with building the village. The vote was to direct the city manager to go out and bring back some options, and bring back some procedures, and bring back some possible sites. That we will address when we come back from our, from our spring, or summer break. And also, if I had to vote today, and I'm clarifying this by if I had to vote today, based on the emails, the phone calls, and the personal contacts that I've gotten from people that live in and around the 13th and Chambers area, I would have to vote no. We're getting a lot of, we're starting to get a lot of feedback from the people that live in that area that are opposed to having a homeless feedback from the people that live in that area that are opposed to having a homeless village in that area. So there has to be more outreach to the public as to what this homeless village is going to look like, how big is it going to be, what its ultimate goal is, the timeline it's going to be there. And that's the decision that we're going to have to make when we come back from our spring bake, our summer break, sorry, flashback to my college days, from our summer break, you know, based on the information that we get from the city manager's office. So just want to make sure that we make that clear that we are moving forward and that we do want to make sure we do it right.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, everyone, for coming. Nice to hear from you. Regarding the Opportunity Village proposal, there will be a meeting at Cesar Chavez School tomorrow night, my understanding is at 6:30. I would like to urge all interested people to attend that meeting to learn more about the proposal. It's a very good proposal. I'm familiar with most of the elements of it. And so I urge all interested parties to attend, and it should be a really good discussion. So I hope to see you there. Thanks.
Okay, so now we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda this evening, and that's a consent calendar. Council President, you want to put a motion on the table?
Yes. I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Counselor Zelenka.
I didn't want to pull this item, but I did want to recognize that Item 2D, Resolution approving low-income housing for the St. Vincent de Paul, low-income housing development at the Stella Apartments, was part of what we're approving here. And I think that's a notable project that we should celebrate, and I encourage everybody to vote for it.
Counselor Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to pull, or can I pull, la, 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 Item E, please? Thank you.
Okay, it's pulled. So we're voting on everything except for Item E. Would you please vote? Eight in favor and none in opposition. It passes. Now we're go to Item E. Counselor Ortiz.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to, oh, thank you, Chris, for helping me. Counselor Farr is helping me appear with the buttons again. I just wanted to highlight that we are going to be appointing a gentleman, Joseph Gonzalez, who lives in Santa Clara area, to the Al Rapa, to Al Rapa. And I just, I just had a little bit of, I don't know if I wasn't paying attention or if it was just not as advertised as we normally do, Assistant City Manager. I'm not really sure when this proposal went out to the community to allow them, for people to know that there was an opening. I didn't, I kept watching for it so I could encourage other people, other community members who might have been interested in participating. So can you, can somebody share with me what was done to advertise this?
It was actually during the regular recruitment. The position was advertised along with all the others. It was just omitted in the appointment process, is what I understand.
I understand it's a mayor's appointment, but it's still our job as councilors.
No, I mean, we forgot to put it on the list of appointments.
Yeah, and I, and I, so I'm not, the mayor has interviewed this gentleman and has put him forth to appointment, so I'm not going to say, let's not do it. But I just, I'm a little concerned that we didn't have the opportunity to help recruit. I was, I thought that we were going to be doing it separately since it's not in line with our regular boards and commissioners, the timeframe. And so I just, I just was wanting to share that.
Okay. I think her point was, though, it went out for recruitment with everything else. It was on the list.
I understand that.
Okay. All right, ready to vote? Please vote. Eight in favor and none in opposition. So congratulations to Mr. Gonzalez. And now we're going to move on to, we have two public hearings tonight. The first one is on ordinance concerning sign standards. Assistant City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to just turn this over to Jerry Lids, and he's going to introduce the topic.
Am I on now? Mayor and council, this evening, you hold a public hearing on proposed amendments to the sign code. There are two basic pieces of this. First is to eliminate some of the exemptions from the permit and fee requirement that ordinarily would apply to a sign application and replace those with two more general exemptions, one for residential properties and one for everything else. And then also, the Second Amendment would set a deadline for city staff to act on an application for a sign code permit where such a permit is needed. I don't think there's any controversy about that second piece. You held a work session. You focused on the exemptions, and you asked specifically if the public would comment on the size of the signs that would be allowed without a permit in residential neighborhoods and in other neighborhoods, but I think particularly in residential neighborhoods. So public is open to, or free to comment on any aspect of the ordinance that was included with the agenda item summary, but you had asked specifically for comments on size.
Thank you for that clarification. So I'm going to open the public hearing. Those wishing to speak during the public hearing must submit a completed request to speak form to the information desk prior to the beginning of the public hearing. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward, if known. You will have three minutes to comment. There are lights on the podium. The yellow light indicates you have 15 seconds to complete your comments. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. Dave Finanke is up first, followed by Justin Thorpe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. David Finanke, Executive Director of the ACLU of Oregon. I believe you are all well aware, I attended your work session, that proposal in front of you is designed to settle litigation that the ACLU has been handling on behalf of a number of residents of the city who had sign code enforcement actions taken against them. And I earlier circulated a letter to all of you that laid out the ACLU's support for the ordinance before you. I wanted to comment on a couple of things that came up during your work session related to the size of the exemption for the signs. Counselor Polling noted that 12 square feet is actually smaller than the size of standard U.S. and state flags, and also the standard size for UVO banners, which are all three by five. We were not aware of that at the time that we were involved in the discussions with city staff about the size. We would not be opposed to increasing the size to 15 square feet. We would be opposed to decreasing the size below 12 square feet. And I want to make a couple of points. One is that just because the size of a sign could be up to 12 square feet or 15 square feet does not mean that most people, or even very many people, would post signs that large. It's important to remember that in your sign code, there really is no process for getting a permit in a residential zone. So if you were to decrease the size of signs below 12 square feet, we believe that you would have a lot of situations where people would be out of compliance with the code and essentially would be prohibited from engaging in expression under the sign code, which would raise very serious constitutional problems. The point of this, these amendments is to bring the code in line, not only with the federal constitution, but with the Oregon Bill of Rights, which prohibits content-based distinctions. We strongly support the ordinance in front of you. If you want to make the signs larger or allowable to be larger, we would not be opposed to that. Thank you.
Justin Thorpe is next, followed by Bob Macheroni.
Good evening. My name's Justin Thorpe. I'm a resident of Portland. I'm here as a volunteer cooperating attorney with the ACLU of Oregon. And as Mr. Finanke said, we support the proposed amendments proposed by the city attorney. I wanted to talk specifically about the dimensions of exempt signs, why we support the 12-square-foot dimension. And I think it's important to note that under the existing ordinance, 12 square feet seems to be the default. That's allowed for the real estate sign exemptions. That's allowed for election signs. To the extent that freestanding signs are allowed in residential zones, they're allowed at 12 square feet. So you already have a dimensional standard of 12 square feet. And I don't think there's any record or any evidence, at least at this point, that justifies limiting that back or rolling it back. There's no history that I'm aware of of traffic problems caused by 12-square-foot signs, particular dimensional clutter or anything else that would justify reducing it that back. So for that reason, I think 12 square feet makes sense. It's already in there. There's no reason to make it smaller. And for that reason, we support the amendments as proposed with that dimensional limitation by council. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Macheroni is next, followed by Joseph CDZ.
Hi, I'm Bob Macheroni. I live at 1994 Brewer, and I have a business at 6th and Lincoln. And obviously, I think most of you know, my sign was the reason for this ordinance change. I put up a sign that proposed MX, and the city cited me. And it's interesting in that, there's that old saying, you can't fight City Hall. And so I fought City Hall as far as I could, and thank God the ACLU picked it up and moved it forward. Okay. I was cited the first time for my sign, and I stated specifically that since my sign was not for commerce, I did not believe the city had any right to collect a permit, fee, or restrict my rights to free speech. It was on private property, and it presented no public hazard. The city made no arguments to that effect. And so I don't really agree with all of this settlement, and I'll tell you why. One, I think the size is restrictive and is smaller than I would, would like to have. And the other part of the agreement is that we're allowed one per commercial law, and there are multiples, you know, businesses on a commercial law, and so they're not allowed one per. The final thing was that while the city was in negotiations with the ACLU over this issue, they maliciously sent me another fine notice for $480 a day and failed to postmark it for two days. And so that became another part of this issue. I'm okay with that. That's just the way the city wants to work that. That's, I understand now how my city works. I don't think it's fair, but I can live with that. I encourage you all to accept the settlement as it's written. I don't see any reason why you should restrict people's free speech in one of the most liberal cities on the West Coast. So I'm not so sure why we had to spend as much of the city's money on the city attorney and why it took so long for the city attorney or the city manager to see this issue a little clearer. And it really shouldn't have had to been necessary to get the ACLU involved. Again, I'd like to thank them for getting this issue to this point. And I think this is something that will be good for our city and allow people to express their opinions without fear of being fined. Thank you very much.
Next is Joseph CDZ.
Good evening. Joseph Sheklozianitsky, 102 Taylor Street. I built the sign for Bob that he got cited for. So anyway, I live in a residential neighborhood, R2, right across from the Se La Vie En. I don't see very many signs up there at all. I have a no MX sign. I think 12 feet should be minimum, 12 square feet. Mine is this big, but, let me see, on Taylor Street, I don't know of anybody else having any other kind of sign or in the West Side neighborhood specifically, there are a few. So I don't think it's going to be a major obstruction or intrusion or scenic thing. I support the ability to have our freedom of speech. Thank you.
Going to close the public hearing and ask council if they have any comments. If I see any, we'll move on to the next public hearing, which is an ordinance vacating a portion of High Alley. And that's a quasi-judicial hearing, so we go through that process. So, thank you. Those wishing to speak during this public hearing should have already submitted a completed request to speak form to the information desk. I'm now going to ask, do any councillors need to disclose any conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts? I see no one. Okay, then. Assistant City Manager, would you please introduce a topic?
Sure, thank you. The Eugene Hotel Retirement Center requests the vacation of a public alley right-of-way known as High Alley. The segment of alley is immediately adjacent to the east side of the Eugene Hotel, located between East Broadway and East Broadway Alley. The Eugene City Council will address approval criteria from Eugene Code 9.8725 in making a decision on the proposed right-of-way vacation, which states that the vacation can be approved if the council finds that the approval of the vacation is in the public interest. Findings of compliance for the approval criterion are included in the council packet as part of Attachment C.
And then, as I understand, am I supposed to read the quotes that are underneath that in the next, oh, okay. So, "If the city has received the legally required consents from the surrounding property owners and the deposit for their proposed assessment, and if the city council finds that the vacation is in public interest, the council shall approve the vacation as proposed or with additional conditions and reservations of easements. Testimony presented must be directed toward the approval criteria or other criteria that the speaker believes to apply to the decision. The failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the city councils and parties an opportunity to respond will preclude appeal on that issue. The failure to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the council to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in a circuit court." Speakers will be called in the following order: those in support of the proposal, beginning with the applicant, those with a neutral position, and those opposed to the proposal. Please give your name and address when you come to the podium to speak. You will have three minutes to comment. The timer and lights on the podium indicate the time you have to speak. A yellow light will come on when you have 15 seconds to complete your comments. I am now going to open the public hearing. We have only two in support, and are, are either the two in support, the applicant, so why don't you come up first? That must be Paul Redhead, right?
That's correct. I'm Paul Redhead. I live at 839 Meadowview Loop in Ward 5. Mayor and councilors, thank you for your time this evening. I come before you as a part-owner of the Eugene Hotel Retirement Center. I'm also an investor in the Quackenbush and Fields Buildings. So as you can see, I have a stake in and a commitment to downtown Eugene. We are here requesting the vacation of the alley between the Eugene Hotel Retirement Center and our parking lot on the east. When this building operated as a lodging facility, the easterly portion of the ground floor of the building was retail on the portion facing Broadway, and to the rear was the hotel ballroom. In the years since the conversion to retirement housing in the 1980s, the space was occupied by the city of Eugene, first the Permit and Information Center and then Public Works Engineering. As configured now, this space is quite deep north to south, running from Broadway approximately 160 feet to the alley at the rear of the building. In the over two years since the city vacated, we've been unsuccessful in attracting a tenant for this space, largely due to the size of it and the depth. We're requesting the alley vacation to allow us to divide this, divide this area into approximately three smaller suites with three smaller suites with entrances facing to the east. These spaces would be of a more traditional retail depth. Our intention is to provide a pedestrian promenade on the east side of the building with storefronts facing the former register guard building. This will allow us to attract a much wider variety of tenants and help develop the east-facing gateway to downtown that we all want and bring the downtown development that we desire. We respectfully request that you approve our request as submitted.
Thank you. John Lawless is next.
I'm John Lawless, 90 East 26th Avenue, Eugene, and I am with TBG Architects, representing the owner in this request. TBG is at 132 East Broadway, Suite 200, Eugene. Thanks for taking the testimony tonight. By approving the vacation of this alley, you'll be supporting Eugene's long-term vision for more vibrant downtown, which is in the public interest. Several reasons to approve the vacation include the fact that all utility companies concur with the proposed public utility easement within the proposed pedestrian promenade. The owner's property in the proposed pedestrian promenade and building and site enhancements can accommodate the city's required 14-foot-wide public utility easement for maintenance access. Number two, we've received the required signed consent from abutting properties per the state statute. Number three, the proposal benefits the public by opening a new promenade with pedestrian amenities and viable retail frontage at an important downtown gateway, contributing to Eugene's vision for a more vibrant downtown. And finally, based on the information and findings contained in the information provided by staff and the owner, the proposed vacation application meets the applicable city of Eugene and state of Oregon criteria for approval. We request you approve the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to close the public hearing. And I'm going to ask if anyone has any objection to closing the public record? Can I see anybody? Okay, so the public record is also closed. Council is scheduled to act on this item on September 10, 2012, which is the first available date after the council recess. Are there any questions that councilors wish to ask of staff? I guess the only question I have is, did we receive anybody with any adverse comments about this?
No, we only received one public comment from a resident at the Eugene Hotel in favor for safety reasons.
Okay. And we have examined whether there's any city need for that alley to remain an alley there?
We have. We've referred it to the utility companies and Public Works, and the ordinance includes a provision for the retention of a public utility easement to address that need.
Okay. I almost heard that. All right, thank you very much. Okay, with that, I think we are through with this particular action. Thank you. We're going to move on, not action, but hearing. We're going to now go on to an action, which is Resolution 5068, Anexing Land to the City of Eugene. Council President?
I move to adopt, pardon me, I move to adopt Resolution 5068, which approves the proposed annexation request consistent with the applicable approval criteria.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. I know that you sent council information about this, but I would appreciate for the people who don't know, aren't familiar, if you could give us some explanation of what this is.
How about I just read you the introduction to the item? This item is a request by Mr. Robert Getty for annexation of a .37-acre property on Oddell Avenue in the River Road area. Normally, annexation requests are placed on the consent calendar, but given the unique circumstances of this application, we have scheduled this as an action item, with the expectation you would have additional questions. We sent you an email and a memo last week, and I think, do you want to outline the legal in a simple way of people's homes?
Speak up as much as you can. Some.
This annexation is different than the typical annexation in that the property is not contiguous to the city limits. The legislature earlier this year passed a statute that would authorize non-contiguous annexations as long as the property was within 200 feet of the city limits and as long as the property owner had owned the property since 1973. Mr. Getty's property and Mr. Getty fit into that circumstance. So that's one thing that's different about this annexation than prior annexations. Up until several years ago, no wait. Up until several years ago, there was a Lane County Boundary Commission, which did authorize non-contiguous annexations in Lane County. When the Boundary Commission went away, the ability to do non-contiguous annexations also went away. So this statute that the legislature just passed is sort of a one-shot deal. The statute expires at the end of this calendar year. Mr. Getty has applied under the statute to be annexed. One of the other differences in this resolution is that state law also authorizes a phase-in of property taxes for up to 10 years, and this resolution would provide that. Essentially, it would provide that Mr. Getty would have the same, an equivalent amount of property tax after being annexed as he would have been had he not been annexed. That would continue for a maximum of 10 years if Mr. Getty and his wife sell the property or otherwise transfer the property. That would also, that reduced property tax also would terminate.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you to Senator Chris Edwards and to Representative Nancy Nathanson and Val Hoyle, who worked very hard with, I know, with Council Ortiz, with I and Mr. Getty and a number of folks to try and find a fix for this really kind of interesting problem that some of the folks in River Road and Santa Clara face with the changing of the Boundary Commission. A lot of people worked together very well in order to, and I should say as well, Representative Andy Olson from the Albany area was very instrumental in helping that as well.
Okay, so I think you're ready to vote on that? Oops, sorry. I see you prepped up on me there. Counselor Taylor?
Thank you. I just want to say that I think this idea of having a phased-in property taxes is an excellent idea. I've suggested that before for Santa Clara people, where we have a big mess with a mix of in the city and out of the city, and I think it would be an incentive for people to annex if they didn't have to, if their property taxes did not go up immediately. And the provision that that changes once the property changes owners is good, too. So I think this is a good pattern for something we might do in the future. Thank you.
Counselor Zelenka.
Are there any other annexations in the works for this particular one-time deal?
This is the only one who's applied, and with the annexation having to be complete by the end of this calendar year, it's highly unlikely that any others will be coming to you.
That was my next question. I'm in favor of annexations in general. This, however, is not a phase-in. It is actually a flat exemption, starts at 69% and ends at 69% for 10 years. And I would be in favor of a property tax exemption that started at 69% and phased in up to the full amount over that 10-year period. That would be a phase-in. I'm not sure why we would, this may be precedence for other folks, I'm not saying that it is, but it may be precedence for other folks to annex into the city. And 10 years seems like an awfully long time to exempt 30% of people's property taxes when the rest of the citizens of Eugene don't get that, enjoy that property tax exemption. So unless it's a phase-in, I won't be able to support it.
Okay. Counselor Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor. So there's been a lot of conversation around the River Road, Santa Clara area and annexation. Generally speaking, it's my understanding that there are some people out there who still hold the opinion that they'd rather not be annexed in, even though the River Road, Santa Clara scroll just finished their, completed their work, and they're, actually, their outreach and stuff showed not so much resistance. And so I think John, City Manager, has been having anecdotal conversations with people, and of course, nothing's been changed ordinance-wise, but that is kind of going to be, I think, the incentive for people to annex in at some point in time. We're already providing services that they're not paying for, so what's, I don't want to say what's the difference, but there really is no difference. So if they annex in and if we absolve them of higher property taxes, either if the property turns over or for a set amount of time, I think at least we're going to accomplish eventually what it is we want to do, which is to really have our urban services contiguous out to our urban growth boundary in the areas where there's a lot of population. So I'm okay with this. I know that this was created for this one case scenario. I don't think that, I understand there's not going to be any other applicants because of the specifics of the legislation that was passed, so I would encourage other people to also support it.
I would just observe that if you have a chance and have not yet read the scroll report, in that it goes into quite a lot of discussion about this and explains the conversations happening with the community out there. And I would also say, and I think it's really important to say this publicly, that we're not making a decision about this. This is going to go back out to the community, and the community is going to be deciding what direction they want to go, and we'll see if we can come to a place that is in the interest of them and the interest of us, and we can move forward. But I don't want people to think that we're going to make that decision for them. It's something that will involve that community, and that's next on their, on their plate and on their list. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. The Mayor and Counsel Ortiz bring up several points I think are very important. City Manager and City Staff have worked very hard to reverse a bad trend in that area that took place for many, many years. And frankly, I hope we do extend this, this exact same model into other folks and other circumstances in the Santa Clara and River Road area. I think it's a good model for how to deal with the problem of annexation. For once, we're finally offering an opportunity where people might want to annex in as opposed to trying to make them do so. And I think it's the exact right direction for us to be heading in, and I'm glad we're doing it.
Counselor Taylor?
Thank you. For once, I agree with Counselor Clark on something.
You keep saying that.
But I'd like to point out, though, I'd like to point out that we, this is not a tax exemption, it's just leaving the taxes the same as they are now. And I'd also like to point out that we have given total tax exemptions to a number of developments for no good reason, and that this is, is for, it would be a healthy thing if those properties were annexed into the city for all of us. It's, and it is just saying you'll pay the same taxes as you pay now.
Counselor?
And I think that's a good incentive, I think it's a good thing to do.
Counselor Zelenka?
I move that we modify Section E so that the tax exemption starts at 69%, increases over time, so it's 100% after 10 years.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Okay, you want to vote on, we're going to vote now on Counselor Zelenka's substitute Six in opposition and two in favor goes down. You're back to the original motion. Ready to vote on that? Please vote. Eight in favor, none in opposition, it passes. Thank you all very much. Now we're going to go on to item number six. This is Resolution 5069, calling a city election on November 6 for the purpose of submitting an advisory measure to the legal electors of the city of Eugene. And I guess you're going to say that somewhat all over again. Please put it on, we'll motion it.
I move to adopt Resolution 5069, submitting an advisory question on rights of corporations, and to authorize the expenditure of funds from the general fund contingency account to cover expenses for the voter's pamphlet.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Counselor Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor. So Counselor Taylor is bringing this forward, but we have gotten a lot of information around it. I really kind of was not really, not sure how I was going to vote on this until Dave Finanke came and spoke to us around, he brought up a lot of questions, and I kind of feel like I, we, I don't like to stall things, I like to give people straight up, you know, what they're asking for, but I really feel like this is one of those things where I can't support it right now. If somebody wanted to move it to work session so we could have more conversation about drafting language, that would be okay with me, but as it stands, I just feel like there's enough, I have enough concern around some of the comments made that I just, I just can't support it.
Counselor Pryor?
Thank you. Did we get any information about what the cost of this election would be?
The cost would primarily be the additional cost of publication for the voter's pamphlet, because there would be additional pages, and so that would be an additional cost. And there would be a cost of an additional notice in the register guard to advertise for people who want to be on the opponents committee. The cost of the election itself, I understand, is covered by the county or the state because it's a November election, and so having another measure on the November election will not in and of itself add any cost to the city. The cost is really the voter's pamphlet and the additional publication notice.
Okay, good. That's good to know, because my initial concern was that we would be spending, and I didn't know how much, on an election that, while it would send a statement, did not have any sort of legal bearing. It didn't require anyone to do anything. In other words, it would be very similar to what the council has already passed in terms of its ability to actually create something. This would be having the city send it as opposed to having the city council send it. The city council has already indicated its will, and this would, this would allow the city to provide advice on it. And that's, that's fine. When I look at the list of other kinds of actions that we've taken in the past, other measures we've put on here, the majority of them have all been around local issues. In fact, I think pretty much most all of them have been local issues, and they've all been pretty much finance issues for the most part. There's been an occasional charter amendment or some other element as well. But I think what was ultimately persuasive to me, as it was with Counselor Ortiz, was when Dave Finanke from the ACLU came up and said, "You may have unintended consequences from doing this the way it is right now." And that gives me pause. As I have mentioned before, I like to do things thoughtfully, I like to do them deliberately, not to intentionally stall, but to just do it right. And so if there is an unintended consequence, unintended consequence hidden in here somewhere that we've not really talked through, then that gives me pause and would probably cause me to not support it now until, as Counsel Ortiz says, I've had a chance to really think about what the implications are and what it might mean. I don't want to make a statement on one issue only to create a problem with another. So I think for that reason, I would not support this particular motion, because I don't, I would like, as she says, to take the time to be a little bit more thoughtful and deliberate about it.
Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to say thank you to Dave Finanke for coming and speaking this evening. I agree with him on two fronts. One's just been spoken to very elegantly by my two colleagues, and I don't need to put any more forward on that. But the other is a very personal thing for me, that I believe that the answer to bad political speech is not a restriction, or less, it's more political speech. And I believe that the proponents are very sincere in what they're trying to accomplish, and I understand and I appreciate their efforts. But for me, you're going to have to get more information to me around the idea that kinds of political speech are something that we should try to limit in some way. And that's kind of the crux, and the issue here is about the kind of communications that are taking place. And again, for me, the answer to bad political speech is more, not less. So I hope we have a more robust discussion on that part of this. Thank you.
Counselor Zelenka?
Yeah, I agree with the sentiment of the resolution and the advisory vote. I basically, I authored the resolution that was passed by council. And we don't, but we don't typically ask for advisory votes on measures that are not related to city actions. They're very far and few between, but we have done it before in the distant past. My problem is with the specific language, and the language is, in my mind, extremely broad, too vague, it's unclear, it's confusing, and it doesn't even mention Citizen United and the other key point of the resolution, which was that money doesn't equal speech. And then on top of that are the unintended consequences that Dave Finanke from the ACLU brought up. So I think the language that we put forth should be, like the resolution, very targeted at a at a constitutional amendment that overturns Citizens United and the fact that the Supreme Court equated money with speech. And look at the draft language in the resolutions that are before Congress that were identified in the original resolution. So rather, but our problem is that we have to refer this by August 9th, or it doesn't get on the November ballot. So we have to do it before we go on summer break, or we miss the opportunity. So rather than wordsmith tonight, I would put forth a motion to table until Wednesday's meeting, 7:25, to give us time to think of different language.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded. There's no debate, no discussion. Vote on that, please. Five in opposition and three in favor. That does not pass, so we are back to the main motion. And we'll continue on here. Counselor Pryor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. You know, when we first discussed this, it was a six to one vote, as I recall, and I was the one vote against moving forward with this, for a different reason than I'm going to be against the motion tonight. We, you know, Counselor Pryor pointed out that we've had a number of, since 2002, we've had, I think, 10 different resolutions, or 10 different measures put onto the ballot by the city council, and they all have been involving local issues, directed at local issues. We're pretty reserved in putting things on the ballot. We don't do it very frequently. And if I were to ask all of the people of Eugene, of all the many things they would like us to put on the ballot, for instance, annex on West 11, where would this particular one lie in the hierarchy of all of the things that people would love to have us put on the ballot so we can get that kind of registration, if we was in favor of it? I think it'd be fairly low, even though the people who speak for it are very eloquent, they're very impassioned, and they have wonderful arguments. I just don't believe it's at the top of the list of what people like, would like us to be spending time on as a Eugene city council, or whatever small amount council we would be spending on this, spending any money at all on it, when other things, given a choice, would rise to the head of the list ahead of this. So I am going to be a no vote on this, and I'll wait for further discussion.
Counselor Brown.
Thanks, Mayor. Well, I mean, you know, we won't know how many people will support this until it goes to the ballot. So to make predictions of, you know, not that many people support it is, that's all it is. It's a guess. That's a wild guess. You don't know until it goes to the ballot. It's known that this is a very widespread movement all over the whole country. People are very concerned about the overreach of corporations and the non-accountability and that corporations contribute to political campaigns anonymously. People are very concerned about that on both sides of the aisle, Republicans, Democrats, independents. There is no question that this is a very important national concern. And I believe that we should put, we should, contrary to what some of my colleagues have said, I think that we should vote to put this on the ballot. It's the very first step in a long process. There are many other things that will have to happen after, if this makes it to the ballot and if it is approved by the majority of the voters. That's just the first step. There's many, 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 many steps that will have to be taken before we get to the point we, and by this time it'll be national, before the dire consequences predicted by Dave Fadanki kick into effect. And coming at the, you know, the night that we're going to, I don't recall any detailed report from, from Dave about these dire consequences for nonprofits and other types of corporations. This is the first I've heard of it. We put this on the ballot, then Dave and all other opponents can outline, via the political process with our voters, our voters' pamphlet arguments, can outline all of their objections, and we can hear about them in more detail as well all the voters. So that's, that's the way that it's done. I mean, we get to hear both sides, and the voters will make up their minds. So I'm going to support this, and I really urge my fellow counselors to support this too. It's a very important issue. It's really important. I think it should go on the ballot. Thank you.
Counselor Taylor.
Thank you. Far from stopping political speech, what we would be doing is opening political speech, opening a way for a community-wide discussion. And I think many people are concerned there would be a lot of speech, a lot of arguments, and we would learn a lot. People who don't already know about it would learn about the situation. As it is, money conquers political speech, the freedom of political speech. The person who has the money can pay, pay for the ads, can pay for the TV appearances. And the person without the money is not, is in a sense rendered speechless. But there, as for bad consequences, no, nothing really will hap, this will happen just because we vote to say that we think something should happen. But we give people a chance to vote, and if people all over the country, all together, it will be a rising thing perhaps, and something will happen. But there'll be plenty of time, as Counselor Brown said, to think about whether there are bad consequences for anyone. All we, all we would be doing if we pass this is giving the people in Eugene a chance to say what they think, and giving the people who support this action a chance to try to persuade other people. Thank you.
Counselor Polling.
Thank you. In addition to what Counselor Ortiz and Counselor Pryor have already said, I was not going to be able to support this. When we passed Resolution 5055, I was the one that championed changing the wording to include unions. Back in my union days, when I was being represented by the Teamsters and also by AFME at different times, somebody in the public forum mentioned about corporations taking the money of their shareholders and spending it on campaigns without that shareholder, shareholders' permission. Belong to a union, folks, see what happens to your union dues. If you think you have control over your union dues, you don't. The unions are not in this wording. That is my major concern. You know, not that I'm against unions. I think unions have their place, except when you're talking about campaign contributions from corporations, you've got to add unions into that because there's currently a nationwide debate on who's giving more money to campaigns right now, unions or corporations. So without that, I couldn't, I couldn't support it. Also, since 2011, we've had 14 local measures. Speaker earlier said, and they went back 20-plus and 40-plus years to find a measure dealing with the national issue. You know, we're here to do local business, and that's what we're taking care of. It's obvious by the past 14 ballot measures since 2011. So I won't be able to support this.
Counselor Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. So there will be a spring election, will there not?
Yes.
Okay. Regardless of whether we have a fall one or not, whether we put this on the fall ballot or not, there'll be one there, and so the brunt of the cost will not necessarily be on this resolution outside of the cost that you already had described of what, of what was going to cost us for this year. Is that correct?
Is your question whether, if the council later refers this to the May ballot next year, would we have to, in addition to the voters' pamphlet, pay an additional amount?
Yes.
I don't know. Beth is answering.
Why would that be? What's the difference?
It's considered a special election year, and on the odd number of years, we would, we would pay a share of the election. If there are other ballot measures and by other jurisdictions, they would pay a share. So if we were the only ballot measure...
No, but if, there is going to be a spring election regardless of this being on a ballot then or not, so would this...
It's just treated differently in odd years and even years. Even years, it's considered a national or...
Okay. And so even if there were other things that were already going to be on the ballot, we would still have to pony up for...
Pay a share of it.
A pair, a share of it, and it would be more than what we're paying for the fall election?
Yes.
Okay. So I, thank you for that information. So I didn't support the motion because I really still don't understand, and if Counselor Zelenka, when he has his time, can explain to me what the difference would be then of how, so I know a resolution is just what we're making a statement in our community, and that's basically what we're saying here. If we're sending it to the voters, are we giving our legislator, legislative aides direction, like our old Brenda Wilson, are we giving her direction to work on this once it passes? Does it have any, does it give it any more weight?
If I can answer that question. If the council refers this to the ballot, then this will be like every other ballot measure. At the point you adopt the resolution, I'll send an email out to city staff saying they shouldn't do anything with respect to the advisory election, I mean, other than the voters' pamphlet.
Yeah.
Because now it would be advocacy, and I'd send the same email that generally I send to all of you, saying you can no longer ask staff for assistance on either arguing in favor or arguing against it. Because even though it's an advisory measure, it would still be considered a ballot measure.
Okay. So what weight, I guess my question was, what weight does this have if it passes as far as us working in Salem or at the, at the federal level?
What weight would the vote, what weight would it have if the voters approved it? Your guess is at least as good as ours in terms of how Congress would take that information.
So this is just an opportunity for our community to, to make a statement, is my understanding. So there really isn't any direction given to the staff. I still have concerns about the corporation piece, so if we could have, if Alan, when you speak to it, I would appreciate it when you, when you have your three minutes. Thanks.
Counselor Pryor.
Thank you. Just to talk about the precedent this would set regarding the measures that have been referred to the electors in the last 10 years by the council. I'll just give the highlights of them. Temporary income tax, gas tax, general obligation tax, police auditor, 3% gas tax, urban renewal plan, local option levy tax, geo tax, geobond tax, police auditor, geobond tax, four-year local option, geobond tax, amending the Eugene city charter, four-year local option. Everything very, very local and very, very specific to things that would affect people here in Eugene as far as how they pay their taxes, how the city operates directly. And this would be different from any one of the measures that have been referred by the, by the city to the ballot. And based upon that, we, we should reject this and work on more of our issues that pertains specifically to the people who live in this community.
Counselor Zelenka.
So I didn't want to try to wordsmith this from here, but let me throw out alternative language. Let's see. I move to amend that the advisory questions state, shall voters request that Congress send to states, shall voters request that Congress send to states a constitutional amendment that overturns Citizen United, that in part allowed unlimited independent campaign expenditures by corporations, unions, and special interest groups? And that essentially, I think, is the line straight out of the resolution that we approved in Section 2, which I thought was the, the main thrust of the resolution that we approved. So again, say, shall voters request that Congress send to states a constitutional amendment that overturns Citizen United, that in part allowed unlimited independent campaign expenditures by corporations, unions, and special interest groups?
Go on.
The amount of words that one can use in a ballot measure are dictated by state statute. The question cannot contain more than 20. And in case you're wondering, the caption cannot contain more than 10. That's one of the difficulties with advisory measures and trying to make it specific, and yet you're only given a certain number of words.
How many words does this?
The advisory, the question itself, I think, is 20, 19 or 20.
Counselor Zelenka, what I would suggest to you is if you vote on the prevailing side, you have the opportunity to bring it back up on Wednesday.
No way. Yeah.
And therefore, you would have time to work with people on the language if that was your desire.
The prevailing side?
Yeah.
Yes.
Even if it's...
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. All right. Back in the queue, Counselor Brown.
Thanks, Mayor. Well, I'm gathering from conversation around the table that there seems to be a big objection that in most of the language of the actual resolution, the words "unions" and "special interest groups" were left out, and I'm wondering if there's a sense by head nods, if that was added back in with that, instead of just section?
It has to be 20 words.
No, 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 no. I mean to the resolution itself, not the question. I mean, I heard a couple of objections that said, well, gee, there's a couple, there's some sections here that just says corporations, but it doesn't say unions or special interest groups. And I'm wondering if, if anyone would, would, like, give me a head nod, would that change your mind to maybe supporting it or not?
Like where?
I don't even know. I heard a couple of counselors say that. I haven't had time to...
I don't hear anything, Counselor Brown. Should I go on? Do you have more to say?
Well, you know, we can refer things to the ballot whether they're strictly local and parochial and very important, or whether they're, we approve symbolic resolutions all the time. And so we can certainly, there's nothing unusual about referring this to the ballot. In previous elections that we've had, there've been enormous amounts of out-of-state money from political action, from PACs coming in and trying to influence the local voters, and a lot of it has been, you know, it's kind of untraceable. You don't know really where it came from. And this resolution kind of goes, starts on the very first tiny little baby step towards, towards correcting that and making elections more transparent and removing, eventually neutralizing the rule of anonymous money in our democratic system. And this is merely a baby step. It will start the process of discussion. People who are pro, people who are con, there'll be a wonderful local conversation here. We get to hear all the arguments. I'm interested in listening to Dave's arguments and other, and other opponents' arguments. It'd be a really great education for our citizens, and the voters would have the ultimate decision. So I think it's really a mistake to not let this go on the ballot, and I really wish you, some of you would change your mind on this one. Thanks.
Counselor Pryor.
Thank you. Okay. Let me see if I can logic this out. The city council has already approved a measure. Theoretically, the language of that measure we approved was acceptable because it was approved. If we could craft an advisory vote that was based on that language, and I know Alan's furiously trying to do that right now, but I would probably say, I don't think you're going to pull it off tonight. But if there was a reasonable possibility that using that resolution's language, you could craft something for Wednesday, I'd be willing to talk about it on Wednesday. I'm not promising how I would vote, but I'd be willing to talk about it on Wednesday because I know what I passed before, and it was acceptable to me. And if you can create an advisory vote, the reason I'm even talking advisory vote is because it's not going to cost us a lot of money, which was a major concern. I'd be willing to at least support, and I don't think there's a motion on the table right now to go to Wednesday. There's not.
But it can be brought up on Wednesday. If you, if you vote no on this, you can bring it back up on Wednesday if that is your, with the language...
That's what I'm getting at. Maybe I'm telegraphing my logic is, it could be brought back up, but between now and Wednesday, I would want to see a language that paralleled very closely what this council has already approved, because that'd be the only basis on which I would send something out. If that were possible to do, I'm willing to talk about it on Wednesday, but I'm not going to vote for something tonight because I think on the fly would be too much of a challenge.
Counselor Polling.
Yeah, I would just like to correct something that I said earlier. I don't know if it's the hour or my age, but when I was making reference to the past 14 measures, I was saying since 2011, it's actually since between 2002 to 2011. So I just wanted to correct that for the record. So I just wanted to correct that for the record.
Counselor Taylor.
Thank you. There is nothing wrong with doing something we haven't done before. That is just a ridiculous argument, in my opinion. And I think what, this is sitting still at 3:00, so I can keep talking all night if I want to. I think what Counselor Brown said about a discussion being educational for the community is really a good point. I think I said something similar before, too. And not only would it educate the voters, but students. If we had a really vital discussion, young people who can't even vote would hear about it. It would be a beginning of their thinking, realizing what government's all about, perhaps. We don't teach government in schools as much as we used to, as much as we should. And I think if we could have this big discussion, it doesn't matter if there's disagreement, but it would maybe get through to everybody. And it's a really healthy thing to have discussions about vital things, and this is vital. And as far as bad things happening, if we vote, if the whole community votes for it, it doesn't mean anything will happen right now. It's a step, maybe. Maybe we have contributed something toward a national movement. And I would hate to see us be the ones who say we're afraid of it, or we don't care. And I, well, I just think we should vote somehow to get it on the ballot this fall. And I'll try again a motion to postpone that, since people, I move that we postpone discussion until Wednesday.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Okay, you get a chance to vote on this one. Five in opposition and three in favor, it goes down. Now, we're going to move back on to Counselor Zelenka. Oh, I'm sorry, wait a minute. I had Glenn in the queue, and I want to give him a chance. I'll call him.
I just, it's true, as Mayor, you said that somebody on the prevailing side could bring something back up on Wednesday. If it's a no vote, nothing would keep any counselor from making a new motion
Period.
On Wednesday. And in answer sort of to Counselor Pryor's question about is there a way to tailor this so that it's more closely aligned with what the council passed, the answer is yes. This resolution actually references the one that you passed. The reason why it's, quote, "limited to constitutional rights of corporations" is because I took the title of the resolution that you passed last, and I used that to frame the question. I can't do it on the fly, but there would be a way to try to come up with something that basically is asking the voters to say whether they agree with the resolution that you passed. Again, the difficulty with an advisory question is what is it that you're really asking the voters to advise on? And when you're dealing with something like this, you could ask the voters, do you believe that Congress should refer out a constitutional amendment that basically undid Citizen United? That's assuming that the voters know what Citizen United is. So it's trying to be specific enough, general enough. If what you wanted to do was reference, basically, we passed a resolution, voters, do you support that? There would be a way to draft a ballot title to do that.
Counselors Zelenka.
So are there any other rules about these advisory questions, other than they have to be 20 words or less?
The caption can be no more than 10 words. The question can be no more than 20 words. The summary can be no more than 175 words, and it has to be written neutrally.
I'll use three vowels.
Can I buy a vowel? United says I can buy a vowel.
And there's to be a very complicated formula that fortunately the Secretary of State no longer applies as to how you figure out, is it okay or not?
Okay.
Now, it's just, it's those limitations, and it has to be neutral.
So we might end up doing this again on Wednesday, but let me throw one more out. This is actually 20 words. Shall voters request Congress send to the states a constitutional amendment that overturns the U.S. Supreme Court's Citizen United ruling?
Is there a second?
And Glenn brings up a good point, which is, this assumes knowledge about what the U.S. Supreme Court Citizen United ruling is. But what I would say is that if this were an advisory vote, and I saw on the ballot, and I didn't know what that was, I would want to find out what it was and make an informed decision. Of course, the downside of that is that people who don't know what it means tend to vote no.
Counselor Taylor.
That's the purpose of the, there'd be a council committee to write an argument in favor if we pass this, and that's where you could explain, no, it doesn't have to be neutral, does it?
The council committee
Yeah.
Is not at all neutral. It's actually the proponents committee.
The proponents.
And there will be an opportunity for people to volunteer to be on the opponents committee.
So we would be, whoever's on this council committee are proponents, would be able to explain what Citizen United was and anything else we want to explain, right?
Yes, subject to, I think it's 375 words.
Yeah. That's enough words. That's, and there would be, and Counselors Zelenka could volunteer to be on the committee if he wants to.
Why don't you want to do that on the phone instead of waiting?
Not from the council. Thank you.
Counselor Brown.
Thanks, Mayor. Well, I bet I'm not alone of everybody in this room. I've opened up ballot pamphlets many times and read through the titles, and I had absolutely no idea what that language meant in 20 words until I started reading the arguments. So, you know, pro and con. And then you develop a sense, and you start asking your friends. So there's lots of ballot titles that are kind of opaque until you start reading the arguments, pro and con. So I don't think that that should be an impediment to referring this to the voters. Thanks.
Counselor Zelenka.
So after having thrown out this 20-word substitute advisory question, I think it, coming upon us to sleep on it and think about it, maybe improve it. So I'll throw out one more time the table until Wednesday, the 27th.
Twenty? Twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth, sorry. Wednesday, the 27th.
It's not debatable, so it's tabled to the 25th.
Did it get seconded?
Betty did. And I see on the board six in favor and two in opposition, so it passes and it is tabled. All right, onward. All right. So we don't have to do that. And the last action of the evening is Resolution 5070. And you want to describe what that is?
Counsel is being asked to consider applying to the state of Oregon for an electronic commerce zone designation, which would establish an e-commerce overlay on the existing West Eugene enterprise zone. E-commerce is basically defined as firms that are engaged in internet-based transactions and commerce. The primary features of the e-commerce zone is the availability of a state income tax credit equal to 25% of new capital investments made by businesses that are engaged in electronic commerce and creating new jobs within the zone. In the near term, the e-commerce designation could be an important tool for the proposed purchase and redevelopment of the Heineck's facility. In the longer term, this tool could help accelerate the job creation, lower unemployment, and higher wage goals that we've established in our regional economic prosperity plan. Recommendation is to approve the proposed resolution, which would authorize an application to the state for an e-commerce designation. Denny Bro is here from Community Development to talk about this in more detail if you have questions.
Okay, you want to put a motion on the table?
I've got a couple of questions.
Okay, why don't we do the motion, and then we'll do questions, okay?
Sure. Okay. I move to adopt Resolution 5070, authorizing application to the state of Oregon for an e-commerce designation in the West Eugene enterprise zone.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, so why don't you go ahead first, George, and ask your questions?
Yeah, I've just got a couple of questions. This is, this would be a state income and corporate income tax abatement.
Yes.
And it wouldn't affect local taxes?
That's correct. The primary feature is a 25% state income tax credit. It's maxed at $2 million, so you'd have to make an $8 million investment in e-commerce-related capital assets to get that maximum $2 million state tax credit. It also broadens under the enterprise zone what is eligible for a tax exemption as personal property. Currently, things like computers and desk and cubicles don't always apply because they're not used for production in the enterprise zone. So this would broaden that for e-commerce, those personal property assets, so that they would get an enterprise zone exemption on those assets as well.
And it would, I assume, it would also apply to businesses who are taking advantage of the enterprise zone.
You would have to be taking advantage of the enterprise zone. You have to meet the enterprise zone criteria for your operation and so forth.
You have to be in that program first.
Yes.
Okay. Now, my question, I guess my main question is, let's say that there's a business there in the enterprise zone who has a plant, who has, they're producing something, and they're eligible, and they get, apply for the e-commerce, assuming that we get it, we get the designation. And then, so would their tax break apply to merely new buildings, or would it apply to what they've already built?
The enterprise zone tax exemption and the tax credit both only apply to new investments made within the zone.
Not, no, it wouldn't apply to, say, like, a building that they've been using for the last five years.
In either program, or in the enterprise zone program, nothing ever comes off of the tax rules.
Yeah. Okay, and then after three years, they're eligible for a possible two extra years if they meet certain wage conditions? I was wondering what that meant.
That's in the state statutes. We've virtually never used that. I think in the prior enterprise zone in the '80s, it was done once for Shelton Turnbull printers, but that was the only five-year exemption that we've ever had in the enterprise zone.
It would be very rare, then. Okay. Yeah, well, I'm going to support the measure because I see 10 other cities and counties are taking advantage of it, and so I think it'd be, and we may not even get it, right? There's going to be one more added, or there're going to be several out of the plot so far?
There's actually 10 available e-commerce zones. There's 59 zones throughout the state, so they're highly competitive. You have to have an investment that's ready to proceed in order to make your case for a designation. So there are some designations currently where there have been no investments, and it's our understanding that there will be maybe an opening coming up. So we're trying to position ourself to be competitive, to be timely in an application when that becomes available.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you.
Counselor Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to support the resolution because I think that we need to be competitive with the communities, but I just wanted to bring one thing up about the enterprise zone. I think it's, in some areas in the community, like in the Whittaker, it's become a challenge because so much retail has moved in because of, partly because of the opportunities within the enterprise zone and working with Denny and Mike Sullivan around the small business loans and all those things. But in the program itself, I think one of the things that needs to be addressing, especially with our multi-use areas, is parking for some of these retail opportunities that we have. I've gotten quite a few comments and concerns, I wouldn't say complaints, about people in the Whittaker. It's become a destination neighborhood for restaurants and breweries, and it's kind of overtaking the people who live in that area's parking. It becomes an issue. So I would like to, at some point, you know, encourage us to look at that and look into adding that, especially since we're really encouraging multi-use zoning for our, you know, as we go forward. I think it's really something that we need to be talking about.
Take transit. Counselor Taylor.
You're going to.
I did.
I was thinking of something. Could this apply to an enterprise, I mean, to a call center?
A call center already qualifies for an enterprise zone tax exemption. If that call center, generally speaking, it's electronic commerce, so it's the sale of goods and services that are engaged over the Internet. So that could be business to business, or it could be business to consumers. I don't believe that the call center, if they're really just engaged in telephone transactions, that wouldn't qualify, but if it does involve the Internet as the primary source for that interaction with customers, it would.
Would there be any wage requirement?
There's no wage requirement in either the enterprise zone or the e-commerce zone.
Well, I'm opposed to giving tax breaks without a good reason. I'm mostly opposed to them. I think the state needs, it's state money, if it's income tax, but the state money's what pays for our schools, and that's the main big thing that's important. I think, and I think that also, we were notified about this a few days ago by telephone, and we had it in the thing. And all the people who say we shouldn't do something suddenly, perhaps should wait for this. I would like to wait for some public comment and some public reaction before I would vote for something like this. Thank you.
Counselor Polling.
Danny, let me make sure I get what you said earlier correct. Did you say that this will actually create more, basically taxable items within the business that, the e-business that sets up?
Yeah, currently, it really broadens the definition of what's allowed under the enterprise zone tax exemption. So currently, only assets that are used for the production of goods and services, manufacturing equipment basically, is eligible for the tax exemption. So if you set up a bunch of computer stations for e-commerce, that would not qualify under the current enterprise zone. So this broadens the definition and does allow those kinds of e-commerce computer assets to qualify, as well as allows for the 25% tax credit.
And this wouldn't change the basic structure or rules and laws governing the enterprise zone?
No, it's basically just an overlay over the current enterprise.
And it doesn't change the current sunset?
Correct. The e-commerce zone would sunset along with the enterprise zone in 2050.
It doesn't change the current boundary.
Correct.
But it does open it up to perhaps more possible employers coming into the area.
Yes.
Thank you.
Danny, could you please tell me what the current status is of the extra 25% in enterprise zones for community benefit?
That's still a part of the program, always been part of the program, yes. So enterprise zone companies, all the companies that would use the enterprise zone program would also use the enterprise zone and the e-commerce zone, so they would be subject to the same criteria that we have in place.
And I think that, as I recall, part of that community benefit was around wages.
There are some public benefit criteria around wages and benefits and so forth, and it really determines what the maximum exemption that the company ends up receiving in that, based on that.
Counselors Zelenka.
I had the same question about the community benefit in our zone. Does that include a wage, and would it apply, a minimum wage, and would that?
There's not a requirement. Basically, companies have to earn that last 25% of the tax exemption based on what kinds of community benefits they're providing. If they're redeveloping a site, based on the wages that they're paying, benefits that they're offering, those types of community benefits.
Would that apply to this?
Yes, because the company...
The last 25%, they still have to meet those same criteria.
The companies are still subject to an enterprise zone criteria, yes, because they have to use the program to be eligible for the tax credit, yes.
Okay. And it says in here that the tax credit's against businesses' annual state income, which I understand, or corporate excise tax liability, which I don't quite clear with that.
If they're doing overseas-type commerce.
Oh, so it's the excise tax on the exploration. So it also says that it's 25% of the investment cost made in capital assets. So what are capital assets? Does that include the property that they would buy, the building, the equipment, server's phone, software?
The definition in the state statutes is anything that's eligible for depreciation under your federal income taxes.
So, yeah, all of that.
Yes, all of that, but the max is $2 million, so there's only so much you can absorb in a single investment, a maximum credit.
And usually, tax exemptions, in my mind, are zero sum, so if we take them a tax exemption or tax break, something else gets reduced, usually in the general fund.
or tax break, something else gets reduced, usually in the general fund, in this case in the state. But in this case, the, it's kind of assumed that without this tax exemption, the investment wouldn't be made, and there would not be any additional taxes. So it's zero-sum with no harm. Yeah. Because there wouldn't have been any taxes to give away had they not had an exemption.
Correct.
It's kind of like Muppets.
The only other point I would make about the community benefit pieces, as I recall, part of that discussion is, we could not put requirements on the enterprise zone in addition to what the state had. We could only say, you get that last 25% if you do these things that are in addition to that. So we can't change the actual...
Statutes.
Statute, right. Just want to make that clear. Okay, ready to vote on this? Please vote. Okay, seven in favor and one in opposition, it passes. And with that, we finish the business of the evening, and we'll be back on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Last night at City Hall.
Last night.